Um, we got, wait, five fifteen. I know we're gonna get it recorded so that some people that aren't here can re-watch it. So I guess we are good. We should start off by, thank you, people coming. So hopefully, we all learn some things. That's my goal here also. And, cause I know it's sometimes some frustration. So, um, thank you for presenting this for us. So we can all get an education piece on this. So, and we will have a test afterwards. So, a driving test, yes. I get to borrow your car.
Well, fortunately, I'm not presenting. Our consultant, KPG Somos, will be presenting tonight. I just have some quick introductory remarks. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, members of the public. I'm Zach Horton, project engineer, City of Wenatchee Department of Public Works. And we're here tonight to talk about roundabouts, as you're aware. For some time, our department has been looking for an opportunity to do an outreach event about roundabouts. And fortunately for us, there was an opportunity to weave this outreach event into our ongoing design effort for the Okanagan and Crawford Roundabout. And as part of our selection process for that project, we interviewed consultants on their ability to do an event such as this. And ultimately, we selected KPG Somos. Here I have Carissa Wittoon, is that how you say your last name? Um, she's a project manager for that project. And this is our subject matter expert that's gonna be facilitating tonight. His name's Sean Samsel. Um, and we really enjoyed their presentation for us when we were doing the selection process. We think you will as well. And we structured this presentation to last about forty-five minutes. We have until six-thirty, so I'm told from the agenda. Is that right? Okay, uh, so please ask any questions as we go. Just be mindful of our time. Make sure we get through all our content in the presentation. Uh, any time left over can be used for extra questions. And if we do make it through and there's plenty of time left over, I suppose if members of the audience would like to ask questions, we could open it up to them. Um, but during the presentation, if you, members of the council or mayor, have any intermediary thoughts that you wanna ask Sean, please interrupt, ask. Um, I just ask that you watch the clock. Make sure we can make it through all the content. Um, so without any further introduction, I'll just turn it over to your facilitator and let him take care of you.
Good evening, everyone. Not after a good start. My computer doesn't work here. There we go. Oh, good evening. Um, really great to be here with you tonight. Thank you for having me. Um, I wanted to start with just a general overview of some topics we're gonna cover here tonight. I worked with Zach and your Public Works Department to put this presentation together. Uh, I know he asked you for questions in advance. I tried to weave content related to that as much as possible through the presentation. As Ja- as Zach said, uh, if, this would be great if it was an interactive experience. So if at any point you have any questions, uh, would like to know more about something that I'm, that I'm speaking about, please feel free to break in and ask. Um, so some of the main topics we're gonna go over tonight. First, what is a roundabout? And, uh, secondly, how are they different from other types of circular intersections? The word roundabout gets used a lot to describe, uh, different intersections. So we're gonna kinda go through what some of the differences there are. Uh, second, we're gonna talk about how do you drive through a roundabout? Uh, next, we'll go through, uh, how does the location and context of the roundabout affect its safety? So, uh, where is it appropriate to put a roundabout? Uh, next, we have a couple of case studies here of before and after, uh, roundabout projects. And, uh, we'll share some findings that we can infer from that. Uh, one of them is here in Wenatchee. Uh, next, we'll kinda move into the design elements and talk about key considerations for a design of a roundabout to make that safe and operationally effective. Uh, we don't wanna just talk about vehicles tonight. Uh, bicycles and pedestrians are a big part of the mobile community. So, wanna touch on how roundabouts accommodate those users. And then finally, some discussion, and I have a couple of short videos for you, uh, about public available information to help convey, uh, information about roundabouts and education to your constituents. So first, I just wanted to, you know, give a brief overview of who I am and why I'm here speaking to you tonight. Uh, my name's Sean Samsel. I'm a license engineer in three states, including Washington. I have been at our firm for almost twenty years now and started designing roundabouts about fifteen years ago. So, I have about fifteen years of roundabout design experience. I've worked on, uh, over twenty roundabouts uh, from planning and final design. Um, a lot of those roundabouts have been done in very different contexts. Everything from mini roundabouts at local streets, all the way up to, I'm sure you've seen roundabouts at freeway interchanges, large arterials. Um, I've designed a huge range of roundabouts. And we'll talk about some of the different considerations that go into those different contexts. Uh, and then, um, I have done a lot of presentations, not exactly like this. I've never done a general, uh, educational presentation for a city council before, but I have talked to a lot of councils and public, uh, about some of the projects I've done. So I, this is something I really enjoy doing. Uh, at the bottom there, just quick examples of a couple of roundabouts I've done. The one on the, the left you see, it's one of my favorite ones. It's right in the middle of the University of Utah campus in Salt Lake City. It's kinda the centerpiece of their campus. The reason I really liked that one, um, hundreds of students bicycle through there every day. Uh, it's just tons of bikes. And so, they really wanted to make that a bicycle-friendly roundabout. We put all the, uh, latest and greatest bike treatments that we could into that one, and it turned out great. And then the one on the right is special to me because it's actually right down the street from my house in the town that I live. My kids go through there, go to school every day. Um, and this is actually one of the case studies that I brought here for you today, that it was an intersection that had, uh, pretty severe safety problems, and a roundabout was really a great solution there. So, we'll talk about that a little more in a little bit. So first, I just wanna give a, a quick overview of different types of what we'll call circular intersections. Everybody's familiar with the four-way intersection, like either a stop or a traffic signal. But there's three pretty distinct types of circular intersections that sometimes people generalize as a roundabout. And so from smallest to largest, first, uh, you have s- some of these here in Wenatchee is what's called a neighborhood traffic circle. So, sometimes people call these roundabouts, but they're really not. Uh, there's no external circle. Usually, the outside is just regular curb returns. Often, uh, these are retrofit into an existing street, not built dedicated, you know, from the get-go. Uh, and the reason why is that they're often built in areas where you wanna use them for traffic calming through the corridor. Uh, and then as terms of the control of entering it frequently, either they have no control or it's yield control. Next, we move up to roundabouts, and those come in a huge range of sizes that I'll talk a little bit more about here in a minute. Um, and those really are a tr- a form of intersection control that is an alternative to either an all-way stop or a traffic signal. Uh, and they consolidate the street into one distinct intersection. One of the great benefits of these is that it encourages lower speeds. And we'll talk a little bit about, uh, when, how you drive through this. The approaching vehicle yields to the circulating vehicle. And then, on the very right there, we have what's called a rotary, much more common on the East Coast, but kind of a older style of intersection treatment. Some people call these roundabouts, but they're huge, hundreds of feet in diameter, uh, meant to connect multiple different corridors together. Uh, and so the, these really don't follow the same design philosophy as a roundabout. So first, you know, we'll simply just talk about, uh, how do you drive through a roundabout? So, here you just see a typical, uh, four-leg, single-lane roundabout. And some of the key points here are that at a roundabout, all vehicles travel in a counterclockwise manner around the central island. Uh, the important point that we'll talk a lot about tonight relates to right-of-way. Uh, and at a roundabout, vehicles on the approaches always yield to vehicles that are already in the circulating roadway. Uh, vehicles also always yield to pedestrians at roundabouts. And I know there were some questions about are turn indicators or blinkers, uh, commonly, or should they be used at a roundabout? There's really not any firm laws on this, per se, um, at least not widespread laws. But generally, most transportation agencies, uh, consider it what you'd call a best practice, uh, to use a blinker, especially when you're exiting a roundabout to convey intent. Next, I also wanted to touch on traffic circles, cause I know there were a lot of questions from the council, um, on those, and maybe how they're, you drive them differently from roundabouts. So, they're similar in the sense that, uh, you drive around these in a counterclockwise circular manner in a passenger vehicle. One of the main differences you'll see there, though, is that for an oversized vehicle, uh, these are designed so that the intent is that they turn left in front of the circle when the, when the travelway is clear. Uh, but the right-of-way rules for a traffic circle work a little bit different than a roundabout. And, and that is, at a, at a four-way intersection with yield control, uh, law dictates that it's called, uh, driver on the right. So you always have to yield to a driver on the right. A traffic circle works the same way. So, uh, it's no different than a four-way yield-controlled intersection in that way in terms of right-of-way.
Question.
Yeah.
What's considered an oversized vehicle?
You know, it depends on the traffic circle. Um, generally, though, in this context of a neighborhood, uh, traffic circle, anything larger than a passenger vehicle is probably considered an oversized vehicle. That could include anything with, say, a pickup truck and trailer, uh, s- what's called a single-unit truck. So you might think of that as a delivery truck, FedEx-type truck, school bus, uh, city bus. All of those vehicles would be considered an oversized vehicle for a traffic circle.
Thank you.
You know, it'd be really nice if you like, they have First Street, that's a traffic circle, and Roundabout on this street.
Uh, can you, do we have both here already in the city? Can, can you tell us which one's a tra- just for, for us all to know, would, tell us which one's a traffic circle and which one's a, a roundabout?
We have six traffic circles in town. They're all on First Street.
Okay.
Everything else is some form of a mini roundabout that's within our jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you.
So next, I wanna go over some key roundabout terminology, cause a lot of these terms will pop up through the presentation tonight. So just wanna, um, get everybody familiar with these terms, so you understand what I'm talking about. So, starting from the middle out, uh, what the, uh, what you see in the middle there is referred to as the central island. Uh, in a full-size roundabout, uh, there's a, usually an apron around that called the truck apron. That helps facilitate oversized vehicles to, to go through the roundabout. Talk a little bit more about that later. The outer diameter of the circle, including the circulatory roadway, is what's called the inscribed diameter. And that's generally how you refer to, to a roundabout size when, when they say, "How big is the roundabout?" Usually, what's being quoted is the inscribed diameter of it. Uh, moving to the outside, you generally will see either pedestrian or multi-use crossings or crosswalks. The medians at a roundabout are referred to as splitter islands. Uh, some roundabouts have bike ramps, not all do, but, uh, it depends on the context of the intersection and what's approaching it. But it's becoming more and more common to provide bike ramps at roundabouts. Uh, and then, what you see over in the bottom is more of a concept. And it's called approach deflection angle, and that's gonna be important when we talk about achieving speed control at the roundabout. And what you see there is I've driven, or I've drawn what the straight-through approach to the circle would be, and then a deflected angle of the, uh, the turn that a vehicle approaching it would have to make. That's really the most important concept in terms of getting speed control for a roundabout and bringing those speeds down to a safe level. So now, as we move into roundabouts, we're gonna talk about some different types and contexts of roundabouts. And starting at the left there, you have what's called a mini, or as they get a little bit larger, sometimes referred to as a compact roundabout. Those at, at the very small end can be as, as small as forty-five inscribed diameter, uh, up to about ninety. A key feature of these is that you'll see here, and you have many of these in the town here, um, they have fully traversable center and splitter islands. And what that means is that oversized vehicles are in, it's a design, uh, criteria that they are intended to use those to traverse the intersection, especially for turning movements. Uh, the paved area generally is gonna be more for passenger vehicles or smaller oversized vehicles, uh, like single-unit trucks or, uh, even smaller buses. As we move up the size scale of roundabouts, you get to single-lane roundabouts. Um, those have a huge range of diameters, and the reason for that is it depends on a lot of things, like how many approaches they have, um, where the approaches line up, and what size, mostly what size vehicle needs to use this. Like for an interstate off-ramp roundabout, generally, those are gonna be very large because they need to accommodate really large tractor-trailers. Um, for in-town, uh, smaller streets and arterials, the size will come into the smaller end of that range. What differentiates these, it's these from a mini is that they have non-traversable islands, meaning, as you see here, the center is often landscaped and not intended to be driven over. Uh, but we do provide that truck apron, again, to help with the oversized vehicle turning movements. These are appropriate for all street classifications. And then, as we move into the largest end of roundabouts, you have multi-lane roundabouts. Um, and really, the only difference between a single and multi-lane here is that the amount of traffic that it needs to accommodate and how many lanes the approaches are. So if you have multi-lane street, a four-lane or six-lane street approaching, um, or the volume of traffic is so large that you need more than one circulating lane, that's when you move to a multi-lane roundabout.
Question again.
Yeah.
On your mini-compac roundabout, I don't see crosswalks in there. Where would they normally go?
Yeah, this one doesn't have crosswalks, and I think that's cause it looks pretty rural, and you don't see any pedestrian facilities leading to it. Um, but generally, they'll be set back twenty to twenty-five feet from the yield line to the roundabout. And, uh, we'll talk about, I have slides specifically talking about-
Okay, thank you.
-crosswalk placement here in a little bit. So now, I wanted to move into just some general discussion on roundabout safety. Uh, so, you know, the, one of the questions that Zach asked me to, to talk about is generally, are roundabouts safe? And, uh, there's been a lot of research on this over, um, studies dating back now thirty, forty years, starting in Europe, and then now many studies in the United States as well. So, there's a pretty large data set on this. Uh, and pr- it pretty definitively and consistently shows that roundabouts can offer significant safety benefits over traditional intersections. Uh, you can see, uh, as much as eighty-two percent reduction in severe crashes, which is really important. Uh, overall crashes cut almost in half. Oh, that's over stop-controlled intersections. And then signalized intersections, actually, uh, quite similar statistics there. And a really important one to point out, uh, roundabouts versus a traditional four-way intersection in terms of pedestrian crashes. This has actually been studied much less than vehicle crashes, um, specific pedestrian safety data. But there are a couple, uh, credible studies from the Crash Modification or CMF Clearinghouse is a really important data source for engineers. And wh- what they do is they compile all studies, uh, that are done for a variety of treatments, not just roundabouts, and then assign a quality of data level to it. So it's a really well-organized database that you can get a lot of confidence out of. And I've cited a few of the studies here that I pulled these statistics from. But, uh, the, the range is pretty wide in studies for pedestrian statistics, but generally are seeing between a forty and seventy-three percent reduction in pedestrian crashes compared to a four-way intersection. So if the research shows that roundabouts are safe, then I think it's important for us to next talk about, uh, the concepts of, how do they achieve that, or why are they safe? And there's really three main points here that we wanna go through. The first is, and most important, is that the, the layout and how vehicles enter and drive through the roundabout naturally eliminates the highest types of severity crashes. And when, what we think about that, if you think about a traditional four-way intersection, usually those are head-on collisions, and then there are, um, side-impact collisions or what you might commonly call a T-bone. And the reason why is because when, uh, somebody runs a traffic signal or a stop sign, they're generally traveling at a pretty high rate of speed, uh, as is the vehicle that has the right-of-way. And speed really is overwhelmingly the factor in the severity of the collision, how severe it is. So, a roundabout, the geometry of it eliminates a crossing type of, uh, crash, promoting lower-speed merger-type crash, what you might call a side swipe. Those are generally much lower in severity and happen at much lower speeds. So that's why you see such lower severity, uh, in the statistics with roundabouts. Uh, next is a reduction in the conflict points. And conflict points, when we, we talk about in an intersection, are generally, uh, an intersection is where two-vehicle paths cross. And if you look at a traditional four-way intersection, there's thirty-two possible points or where a car either turning or going straight might conflict with another car. And every, uh, crossing point is really, you might refer to it as a decision point for a driver. A driver needs to identify that a vehicle is there, identify if they have the right-of-way or not, and then make an appropriate reaction. And that can happen in tenths of a second, very quickly. So, if you can eliminate conflict points, you're eliminating decision points for drivers. And by simplifying that, you're raising their awareness and chances that they're able to appropriately identify a conflict and react to it in time to avoid a collision. So, you go from thirty-two points, uh, vehicle to vehicle with a four-way intersection, and sixteen vehicle to pedestrian, uh, down to eight for both, uh, with the roundabout. And lastly, this is, uh, one of the most important points, again, in lowering severity of injuries, is creating a low-speed environment. We'll talk in a little bit about the, how the geometry of a roundabout does that. But, um, this is really great in protecting your most vulnerable users, and those are cyclists and pedestrians. So, NHTSA has compiled a pretty extensive data on this. And you can see, a typical speed range for a roundabout is usually twenty, twenty-five miles an hour going through it, and especially when they hit the pedestrian conflict points. Uh, vehicle traveling twenty-three miles an hour, hitting a pedestrian, there's a ten percent risk of death. If you're up to, say, forty miles an hour, where you might, you might have on a typical collector or arterial without control, that's five times higher, almost, you know, one in two fatalities for pedestrian strikes. So, lowering the speed, uh, and then, uh, reducing the conflict points is really important in terms of pest- protecting pedestrians. So next, I wanted to go through, uh, a little bit about how you decide is a roundabout the right solution for a particular intersection. And the way that we do that in engineering is at the planning stage, using a methodology called the Intersection Control Evaluation, or ICE. And there's really well-published guidance on this process at this point, both on the national level. And WashDOT has actually a really great, uh, design process here in, in your state, um, that lays out the ICE process really well. And what that does is it's a data-driven framework where it takes a variety of metrics, everything from operations, uh, safety, reviews the traffic levels, uh, and it in- does include costs as well, and puts that into a cost-benefit evaluator, uh, to see what types of intersection treatments may be appropriate for a specific location to help make a data-driven decision. Uh, so one thing I did wanna touch on is that, uh, the ICE does include evaluation of traffic operations. And this is hard to make generalizations about because, uh, every, every intersection is very specific. You can't generally say that one is better than the other in any contact, in any, uh, general context. That's why we do the ICE. Um, but generally, when used in the right context, roundabouts have been shown to reduce delays when used in the appropriate volume ranges. So, overall delays, and again, you can see how huge the range is here from studies, thirteen to sixty-five is a huge range. And that's really because it depends on the specific intersection studied and what those volumes are from each leg. So, that's why sometimes it can be drastically more effective than others. But in general, um, national studies have shown that roundabouts reduce overall delays. And I think a really important point is that it reduces delays in queuing on the minor street, which is really nice. That's usually when it's substituted for either a two-way or four-way stop. On a very busy street where the major street has lots of through-traffic and a minor amount of minor-street traffic, it can be very difficult to find, uh, gaps to turn out, and a roundabout really helps with that. So here are just some general, uh, situations and contexts where a roundabout will work well. Um, intersections with what we call low to moderate traffic volumes. I'll, I'll talk a little bit at the end about where those ranges fall. Um, it, it's definitely true that in an intersection that has too much traffic, a roundabout may not function nearly as well as a traffic signal would. So you definitely have to use it in the, in the right range of traffic. Uh, intersections with complex or skewed geometry, generally, you don't want, uh, heavy skews on a four-way intersection because it can be very difficult for drivers to look, to look back. And a roundabout, uh, because of the circle, lets you bring a lot of those approaches in at a more perpendicular angle. Replacement of all-way and two-way stops, intersections with high-left turn volumes, uh, that has to deal with, with, um, not having to cross the opposing love, uh, direction of traffic before you get the right-of-way. Uh, intersections with higher rates of angle and left-turn crashes, it's kinda what we, we talked about with the T-bone collisions earlier. Corridors where lower speeds are desired, um, roundabouts can be really effectively used in succession to control speeds through an entire corridor where that's a, an issue. And then intersections with high pedestrian activity. So now, we're gonna move to a couple of case studies. Uh, the first one here, I worked with, with Zach to select among, uh, some of the roundabouts that you have here. And so we selected Western and Springwater. And so what we did here, this is, uh, kind of a crash-data-driven analysis where we pulled traffic, uh, crash data, um, for about six-year periods before the installation of this roundabout and afterwards, to see if we could draw any general conclusions from the changes in the before-and-after condition. So, bef- in the, in the before condition, this was a two-way stop-controlled intersection. Western running north-south was the major street. Springwater was stop-controlled as the minor street. And what we're seeing is that the crash rate was for the six years prior, yes, six years prior to roundabout installation, was running about one-point-four crashes a year. And so I went through all these crashes, the, the police data reports, and, uh, just to see if I could see any findings or generalizations. And you can kinda see, uh, in the accident graph there, that there's really not any observable pattern in the type of, of crash that you see here. Aside from failure to yield was noted as the most common contributing factor in a majority of those accidents. About two of the crashes did result in injury, and one of the injury crashes did involve a pedestrian being struck by a turning vehicle as they were crossing the road. So the roundabout here was constructed in late two thousand eighteen. And this is what the crash data looks like afterwards. Uh, so this is a mini roundabout. It's seventy-three inscribed diameter. It does have a traversable center and splitter island as part of the design. The crash rate, uh, in the five-and-a-half years since installation is down to about one-point-one crash a year. So, dropped a little bit. Uh, but no injury crashes were noted. No pedestrian or bicycles were involved in any of the crashes. Uh, still, the majority of crashes, no failure to yield as the, as the primary cause. So, when we look at the type of crashes that are occurring here now, you can see that it's a little bit more of an observable pattern. Same type of crash, uh, in a couple of different quadrants there. Those are low-speed angle collisions, essentially where the entering vehicle didn't yield the right-of-way to somebody already in the circle. Uh, that was what was noted in the police reports. It, I thought an interesting observation is that half of the crashes were the, uh, the, I guess you'd say, at-fault driver was on what was previously, or is still the major street, Western Avenue, where they did, previously didn't have any control. So, not sure if that, um, driver behavior has anything to do with it. Uh, did look, excessive speeds were not noted as, uh, contributing factor. That's usually when you look at crash data for roundabouts. An important thing to know is that, uh, i- is speed being noted? Because speed control, again, is one of the key factors in making these safe and operational. I did re- a field review of it. The traffic control devices, meaning the signing and striping, look like they're, uh, current with the current national guidance from the manual of, you know, from Traffic Control Devices, MUTCD. That's important because we wanna know are drivers getting the proper feedback from the traffic control vices, devices there that are intended to help them understand how to drive through the roundabout. The only thing I did notice is that, uh, there's a couple of corners there where, that may wanna be reviewed for sight distance on the approaches because an important part of yielding at a roundabout is being able to look to your left and see vehicles on the approach and, and in the circle. So making sure that those are visible generally will help, uh, avoid failure-to-yield crashes.
Sean, that was my next question, and I'm glad you, you said it. Because if, for example, you're traveling west on Springwater to make a right turn on Western, that visibility on the left side of the property owners, the big shrub right there is blocking the view. Now, when you guys construct these buildings, is that something that the, I don't know, maybe this is a council thing, that the owners have a certain amount of height near an intersection of their property, or not?
We, we do have c- code. I mean, uh, that you have to, um, be so far away, correct?
Twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five feet, yeah. So it's probably something we just need to, okay.
And I did no- I did notice that same bush that you're talking about. I know exactly the one you're talking about. I was sitting there on Springwater, waiting, and there's a huge bush there, and the car just kinda pops out at you, so, yeah.
And regarding the speed through this intersection, I, I believe it's posted as twenty on this one?
The, there's two different types of speed here. There's a corridor regulatory speed, which by law is what a, a vehicle would have to follow. And then there's what's called an advisory speed. And I, I believe all your advisory speed plaques for your roundabouts are posted at fifteen. So, but that's not a legal regulatory speed. That's advising, um, the, the approaching vehicle that, that's-
Do we have both on this intersection now? I know when we first put it in, it seemed like we didn't. Maybe that was Cherry.
We, we do have advisory plaques up there.
Okay. On Cherry as well now?
I, I believe so, yeah. I think it's standard draw and makes.
Okay. I'd hate to see somebody take that at twenty-five.
Um, yeah, for, I, I did sit out there for a while. I didn't notice, uh, a big speed problem with the approaching vehicles. It didn't look like there were a, a lot of vehicles speeding through there. It's, the, the biggest thing out that I noted was just that the sight distance appeared a little bit limited and a- It's the, the biggest thing that I noted was just that the sight distance appeared a little bit limited in a couple of the corners, so. Uh, second case study I wanted to bring to you guys tonight is uh the one I mentioned earlier. This is right down the street from my house. I was previously a very busy, always stop intersection, it was experiencing frequent crashes. This area gets heavy si- cyclist and pedestrian use, it's on the, the route to two local schools. So uh big peak hour traffic, especially during the school year, during uh school commute and drop off times. And you can see there in the bottom that um there are many of the same type of accidents. Those were higher speed T-bone collision, so angles, uh four injury crashes in two years. Uh, a couple of them were pretty severe from people running stop signs. So the town council here realized that something needed to be done. We did an ICE to evaluate a traffic signal in a roundabout at this location. Um, they elected to go with the roundabout. So we installed one, uh, that's the finished roundabout there. Uh, near the end of two thousand nineteen, in the four years since this has been in, they've only had one crash. And it was a low uh severity injury crash. So ninety percent reduction in the inju- injury crash rate. Uh, and uh I wouldn't say pushback from the community when we were looking at this, but a lot of people did want to go with the traffic signal. It was mixed, we did a pre um pre-construction or during design survey. It was right at fifty-fifty between roundabout and signal in terms of public opinion. We did a lot of public outreach with this uh in education and then did a post-construction survey. Uh, over ninety percent positive feedback in the post-construction survey on this, so uh that was really great to see.
And what's the uh inner diameter of this one?
It's a little bit larger, uh, this one is about a hundred and ten. And you can see it's not quite a multi-lane, the circulating is, is one lane. But because there's four lane roads coming into it, there's dedicated bypass lanes. But the circulating diameter is a little bit over a hundred in this one.
Thank you.
So next I want to move into some design principles of how do you design a roundabout to be safe? And there's really four main things that we want to hit here. First, again, talking about creating a low speed environment. Uh, we're going to talk what, what we just mentioned with the Western and Springwater, a little bit about sight distance for driver and pedestrian visibility. Uh, we're going to talk about considering the appropriate design vehicles for the context of the roundabout. And then uh wrap that up with accommodating multimodal users. So first, how do we create, use geometrics to create a low speed environment? That really goes back to this concept of approach deflection where if the path through a roundabout is uh s- too straight, unimpeded. Isn't sufficiently blocked by the central island so that the car has to naturally slow to make that turn. You're going to see high speeds. Um, ideally, depending on the roundabout, approaches need to be less than twenty-five miles an hour to operate safely for large roundabouts. For mini roundabouts, we'd want that to be more like twenty or a little bit less. Uh, and what we do here, I, I'm showing an example of a, a roundabout I did in California. Uh, we run what's called the fastest path. And so there's a methodology from F H W A um that very good guidance on this about. Once the roundabout is drawn, how you construct what's called the fastest path. And that's laying out a series of arcs according to some offsets that they give you. Uh, and then measuring those arc, arcs, putting it into a calculation. And that gives you the fastest theoretical speed that uh a normal vehicle will drive through this. So as we develop roundabout designs, we iterate with this fastest path to make sure that we're bringing those approaches down. Uh, into the range that is safe uh and operational. Next, talking about sight distance, again, F H W A gives great guidance on this. Um, there's two different kinds of sight distance that we consider. One is called stopping sight distance. So um there's a series of calculations that are performed uh based on speeds and the geometry of the roundabout. That show us what kind of unimpeded uh sight lines you need to see for a driver to be able to stop safely before they enter the roundabout. And then as they approach the roundabout, uh, it's a little bit different of a concept called intersection sight distance. And this is a little more judgment based, but generally the concept is that uh they need to be able to see uh far enough. To be able to make a stop or a yield decision or a go decision. Um, with the information that they can see in front of them in terms of what other vehicles or pedestrians might be approaching. So uh again, this is an iterative process as we design roundabouts, we perform the sight distance checks uh to make sure that we're meeting those levels. Next is accommodating the appropriate design vehicles. And this really changes depending on the context of the intersection. Uh, if you're doing a roundabout in an, at an interchange off-ramp. Uh, the design vehicle will be huge trucks because they frequently need to use that uh down to. If you're doing one at a local street, uh, it might be something more like a very small but um tractor trailer or school bus. Um, that is what we call the design vehicle. And that's the largest vehicle that you expect to use a roundabout frequently. So, you know, daily, if not weekly, this, this wouldn't be kind of a one-off type of vehicle. Uh, as opposed to what we call a check vehicle. And that is that we realize sometimes there's, there's one-off very large trucks. Um, we actually just met with the power company today to talk about how to get their mobile substation through an intersection. So th- those would be things that happen very infrequently, but still need to be accommodated. Uh, and those check vehicles usually come from uh conversations with stakeholders and working with them on what their needs are. And next, we're going to talk about how to consider multimodal user needs. So those are bikes and pedestrians. And so the chart I have here is that there's really a very wide range uh of, of bicyclists out there that, that use our roads and transportation network. Everything from uh very recreational cyclists, but are what we call not very confident people riding with their children or families. Um, that need protection or, you know, want to be shielded from traffic, all the way up to highly confident cyclists. I'm a big cyclist myself, don't mind riding with traffic. Um, so the, what we want to do for bicyclists is try to provide m- multiple paths through an intersection. To accommodate varying rider comfort levels. So for those highly confident users, uh, want to make sure that it's clear that it's okay in a roundabout to take the lane and ride with traffic. Uh, when you provide a low speed environment of fifteen, twenty miles an hour through roundabout, that's very compatible with the travel speed of a competent cyclist. So uh that actually works quite well for them to take the lane and ride through with traffic. And then for less confident users, uh, people that don't like to, to ride on the street very much, people riding with their children. Um, or schoolchildren riding by themselves. We want to give them options and routes through a roundabout where they can safely get off the street. Using something like a bike ramp and then depending on the space available, either ride outside through the roundabout and then re-enter downstream. Uh, or dismount and be able to walk their bike through like a pedestrian, but something that they're going to feel really safe and confident in. Moving on to talking about pedestrians, uh, one of the reasons that a roundabout is great for pedestrian crossings. Is that it institutes a principle that's called a two-stage crossing. What that means is if you look at just any of your general, let's just take a two-lane arterial or collector street. That's generally going to be without a median, uh, it'll be probably forty feet wide or so. Uh, two-way traffic, no refuge in the middle. So a pedestrian that wants to cross that street has to walk forty feet with no protection. And monitor two ways of traffic coming across, uh, as well as potentially turning vehicles. Uh, when you go to a roundabout, the crossing distances generally get much shorter. And the concept of a two-stage crossing is that they only have to look for traffic in one direction at a time. Which helps especially with uh schoolchildren or visually impaired users. That it helps a lot in terms of their safety of crossing where they can look in one direction at approaching vehicles. Make a short crossing of more like twelve to fifteen feet instead of forty in one go. Uh, have a nice refuge to sit in where they're protected from traffic, look in the other direction, uh, now that they've already crossed one. So separating those uh directions of travel, make another short crossing and then they're across the intersection. There, there was a question about how we determine the crosswalk setbacks. And there's actually uh pretty firm and detailed guidance on this for a couple of reasons that I'll talk about here. So first on the entry, you really want a crosswalk setback of about twenty to twenty-five feet. Uh, and the reason for that is because you want to be able to give a car, vi- passenger vehicle. Space to be able to store where they're not blocking the crosswalk, but still out of the circulating way. So that they have a place to safely yield and then make an observation of any conflicts before they proceed. On the exit, similar concept, you want to give a, a place, a vehicle, a place to store that's outside of the circulating roadway. Because uh, a vehicle in the circulating roadway doesn't always e- expect a car to be stopped there, you know? So if a, if you put, place the crosswalk very close to the, to the uh circulating diameter of the roundabout. And a vehicle has to stop for a pedestrian, they will be out in the circulating roadway, increasing the chances that they might have a collision. This gives them a p- place to safely store and wait for a pedestrian to cross if one is there. It also creates the appropriate amount of stopping sight distance to identify the pedestrian. You see over there the sight visibility triangle on the right, uh, and then gives them enough room to make that decision point. And then know that they need to stop before they get to the crosswalk. There's also a lot of great treatments that, these are not just applicable to roundabouts, but you do see them often and I've used these often at roundabouts. Um, and the goal here is that for pedestrian safety, what you really want to do is maximize the visibility of the pedestrian. And the crossing and make sure that drivers expect a crossing. So when drivers are alert, expect a crossing and then can identify the pedestrian. Uh, the odds of a, a crash or collision go way down. So some of the treatments that we have available to do that are raised crosswalks. Uh, you can see there, there's a raised crosswalk on the left. We've also color differentiated it by using concrete instead of asphalt because that really stands out. And it's a visual cue to drivers that something is different coming up and I need to be aware. On the right, again, another raised crosswalk, but you can also use color differentiated um crosswalks uh without being raised. If you don't want that speed table effect, it still gives that visual cue. The one on the right, uh, we ended up using a stamped brick pattern as well to give a tactile feedback to the driver. Uh, and then both of these have uh actuated pedestrian beacons, I know you have some in down here. These are called rectangular rapid flashing beacons, uh, just gives a kind of a bright strobe effect only when actuated. That really raises driver awareness that there's a pedestrian crossing that's imminent. Uh, it's, I like these a lot as opposed to some kind of a constant flashing beacon. Because anytime drivers see something day in and day out, every day, they kind of acclimate to and get used to it. Uh, the, the strobe effect of these that only comes on when actuated really lets drivers know that if it's on, there really is somebody that pushed the button and, and is around. There's also a, a lot of treatments, again, not specific to roundabouts, but often included at roundabouts for our visually impaired users. Um, first up on the left there, uh, everybody's, I think, is familiar now with the yellow panels in the ground with the truncated domes. They're on, uh, those have been uh an ADA requirement for years now for new construction. Uh, the formal name for those is called a detectable warning surface. And the visually impaired users know that the tactile feel of that indicates a safe crossing for them. Uh, also recent guidance that came out with the new version of the ADA requirements called Proag. Is that at roundabouts now a minimum of two, two foot, they call it non-prepared buffer barrier between the sidewalk and the traveled way. All that really means is that it has to be something uh that is tactilely different, noticeably different than a sidewalk. So you wouldn't want to use, say, smooth bricks or something right next to it, right? It might be a different surface, but maybe hard for a visually impaired user to detect that. It's much more common to use grass, um, gravel, you know, something like that. That gives an obvious tactile feel that that is uh not the way that the pedestrian path continues and gives them that buffer from traffic. Down there on the bottom are what's called TDI's or tactile directional indicators. Those look similar to the truncated domes. Uh, it's essentially if you connected all, all the domes in a line and then replicated that over and over again. Uh, that's what they look like. And those are meant to be a guidance to get to a safe crossing. So not placed at a crossing, but you can see here how those lead to a safe crossing. And so somebody using a, a cane can detect that and then that will lead them to the crossing. And then lastly, up there on the top, this is more of a bicycle treatment called a TWD or tactile warning delineator. Just a very small um trapezoidal hump that can be picked up with a cane. Uh, but also ridden over with a bicycle uh fairly easily. This is just a visual cue or a tactile cue for users uh that separates bicycle and pedestrian space from each other. So you'll see these a lot of times at the top of bike ramps so that a pedestrian doesn't confuse the bike ramp with the crosswalk. So lastly, uh, how can we help convey this information to the community and help build constituent support for roundabouts? So there's a lot of um methods that. I don't know if that was my hook or not. Um, that are available first, uh, with any specific project. It's great to do public meetings and open houses, I love doing those, just um answering people's questions, hearing what their concerns are. You hear a lot when you're developing a specific project from the people that live there and, and drive through it every day about things to consider. Uh, you know, that are very helpful in developing designs. Uh, holding key stakeholder meetings with police department, fire department, the school districts, municipal services like trash. Uh, any um, any users that need to go through an intersection like this so that we can make sure we accommodate their needs in the design. There's a huge amount of educational videos out there now about how to drive through a roundabout. We're going to watch a couple of real short ones here uh in a moment. Uh, that can be posted social media account or shared through um the town's website that are great for educating people on how to drive through a roundabout. Um, for specific projects, you can see there on the left, uh, perform simulations and renderings can be made by the design team. That really help people visualize how they would drive through a specific intersection. There's a lot of uh publicly available in, information packets out there. Your state DOT WashDOT actually um has an extensive library of roundabout information that's available for free. Uh, that's very good guidance, um, that can be shared. And then I mentioned before, user before and after surveys, I, I really love doing because the before surveys really, uh, you get a lot of feedback on. What the public uh concerns are, what they'd want to see. And then in the after survey, uh, you really get to know, did I address those or not? You know, and then what can we do, what worked well and people love, what can we do better next time, you know, to keep building better roundabouts? So I'm actually going to play, they're only a couple of minutes long, two short videos. These are an example of something publicly available that can be shared um that really give a good overview of how to drive through.
In many instances, roundabouts are a preferred alternative to traditional roadway intersections at locations with high collision rates. Roundabouts eliminate head-on and T-bone collisions, reduce the severity of crashes, improve traffic flow and pedestrian safety. In this short video, we want to provide you the education to effectively navigate roundabouts. Here are a few simple tips. As you approach a roundabout intersection, slow down. Many roundabouts are designed with a slight curve or chicane that slows traffic. This calming feature reduces speeds down to between fifteen and twenty-five miles per hour. Signs and lane markings will guide you into which lane you should use before entering the roundabout. As a rule of thumb, to turn right, be in the right lane, to turn left, be in the left lane. Straight is usually either lane, but check the signs to be sure. Once you pick a lane, stay in that lane until you exit the roundabout. The spiral or dotted lines will guide you. Traffic that is inside the roundabout has the right of way. Drivers entering the roundabout must yield to vehicles already inside. Look left as traffic always moves counterclockwise. Drivers should use their right turn signal when exiting a roundabout. This helps other drivers understand where you were turning. Keep a safe distance behind trucks or large vehicles. Freight trucks are allowed to use both lanes prior to entering the roundabout, while driving inside the roundabout and for a short while after exiting. Sometimes trucks use the edges of the center island to maneuver. That's okay as the center island is designed to help. Do not pass a truck in a roundabout, it is very dangerous. Pedestrians must always use the marked crosswalks at each approach outside the roundabout. And drivers should always yield to pedestrians. The center island is not safe for pedestrians because it is there to assist trucks. Bicyclists can enter the roundabout as any other vehicle would or use the crosswalks. Drivers should treat cyclists like any other vehicle and yield to any cyclist already in the roundabout. Finally, if an emergency vehicle approaches, drive through the roundabout and pull over just like you would at any other intersection. By keeping these simple rules in mind, navigating a roundabout will be a safe and smooth experience. You can also request a copy of our handout or find it at this link. Thank you for watching.
So I have one more, it basically says the same thing. We, we can watch it or we, we can skip it if you want and you let me know.
Well, we have some questions here and then I, I, it would be kind of enjoyable if we can get a cup, maybe a couple of questions from the audience that came here specifically for this. Maybe just for like five minutes, we'll open it up. And then if, if you guys would stay after and if they had more questions, maybe in the hallway, you guys could ask uh if you wanted to. you guys could ask, uh, if you wanted to, um, that'd be great, something like that.
If we wanna skip the second video, I do have one final slide.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's good.
Yeah, of course, we, any, any discussion items or audience questions you want, we can go through. So I'll skip that. Okay, um, so everything we've talked about tonight has been a general about roundabouts, not about a specific location. Um, but as we're doing this as part of the mini roundabout project at Crawford and Okanagan, so I did just wanna briefly touch on that one. Uh, we're very early in the design concepting for that. But just wanted to share some initial observations, uh, of our work so far. So, uh, first, I think a mini roundabout at that intersection is context appropriate given, uh, the, the streets that come into it. They're both two-lane minor archers or collectors. Um, the, the type of and volume of vehicles that go through there is very, um, compatible with a mini roundabout. Uh, second, I think a, a benefit of this is that it creates consistency within the corridor and anytime, I think you can create consistency of driver expectations that there's a benefit there. So, uh, as you all know, there's a roundabout a quarter mile to the east on the same corridor. So, uh, you know, it's, it's something that drivers would expect, uh, to encounter. Uh, th- next helps maintain moderate speeds through that corridor. There's a school right on that, right on that corner. I know a lot of schoolchildren go through there, um, moderate speeds, maintaining that is nice. Um, we talked about shorter and protected crossings for pedestrians. That street right now is about forty feet wide. Uh, going to a mini roundabout will have two much shorter crossings that are much more protected for pedestrians and schoolchildren. Uh, wanted to touch a little bit on the appropriate capacity. So the chart that you see here on the left, uh, comes from the highway capacity manual and, uh, the, these are general o- observations on a roundabout, but it gives you a good idea on if the, with the volumes you have at a location, if a roundabout is appropriate or not. And so you see there, there's a series of, of blue dashed lines, uh, and the, the lowest blue dashed line is where a single lane roundabout is likely to operate acceptably. So that's an ADT or, uh, average daily traffic of what goes through there of about fifteen thousand. Uh, this intersection has just about thirteen thousand. So below that and then a, a single lane roundabout may work all the way up to thirty thousand ADT, although you have to evaluate it much more closely, the higher that gets. So this is definitely in the range where a single lane, uh, roundabout and mini roundabout would be appropriate. The minor street traffic here is about sixteen percent. Um, and so I think one benefit that you'll see of a roundabout here is that it's likely to reduce delays on the minor street. That would be Okanagan in this situation. So for context, Crawford has about eleven thousand vehicles a day. Okanagan has about two thousand. And so if you wanna, especially in a peak hour, go straight through on stop control on Okanagan, uh, either straight through or turn left, you have to negotiate two, two directions of traffic and find a gap in both of those directions before you can successfully complete your maneuver. Uh, going to a roundabout here, let's just say for the northbound direction, you'd only have to look, um, for cars coming from the west, traveling eastbound and find a gap in one direction of traffic and that, then you can safely enter the roundabout. Uh, and then you have the right-of-way priority over all of the westbound traffic. So being able to only need a gap in one direction at a time, uh, should definitely help reduce the minor delays on that street. So, yeah, those are all my, uh, prepared slides for you. I'd love to answer any questions you have or audience questions.
My big thing with roundabouts is pedestrian safety and I, especially when it comes to the mini roundabouts, I'm always concerned that the driver's spending so much time looking left to see if they've got enough room to g- get in there that by the time they do get in there, they totally miss looking for a pedestrian.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, traditionally, uh, Cherry Street and, uh, Springwater Streets had stop signs there and so you were stopped there and you were looking both directions. So you're looking for pedestrians and I, I, I walk through that intersection at, at the top of Springwater a lot and we typically don't like going through there at all. We usually walk further down the block and either cross at the light or just cross in the middle because we feel it's safer. And I'm wondering if you could address that a little bit better and especially when we're looking at this one where there's thirteen thousand cars a day and a lot of schoolchildren are gonna be going through here. At what point do you recommend putting in the flashing beacons for a crosswalk to help get drivers' attention instead of focusing on that driver on the left?
I, I recommend, uh, or try to include the RFBs in every roundabout that I do. They're actually now, uh, an actuated signal of some sort is required, uh, in the new, uh, I think it's ProAg, at multi-lane roundabouts are required. They're advised ea- at single lane roundabouts. Uh, I've used them many times at roundabouts. I, again, I, I'm a big advocate for that treatment in terms of the, the visual, um, differentiation and alertness that it gives drivers. The problem you're describing, I think, um, is really a common in any type of a free right scenario, you know, that where even at a four, four-way stop where somebody stopped there, naturally if they don't have to worry about, you know, traffic coming from this direction, they wanna turn right, uh, they're looking this way and then have a tendency to, oh, I see a gap, go, right? And then they're, regardless of there's a pedestrian here or not. I think that is where the importance of, uh, the crosswalk setback comes in, because even if somebody does have that driver behavior, giving them enough distance to be able to identify the pedestrian and then a safe place to stop. So I think it's, that's a really important design element that can help that.
That's the stacking you're talking about? Is it called, did you call it stacking or something?
Yeah.
Is store, store?
Storage.
Store it up.
Yeah, that's that concept here. So what you see here, that would be the, the driver, the vehicle you see on the departure, right? If you visualize this entry vehicle looking left. And this distance, the blue arrow that I've drawn, uh, actually is a calculated distance that you wanna make sure you have between those two crosswalks, um, based on the expected speed here. So that is one thing that we check as part of the sight distance evaluation.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there questions from the city council before we ask anybody from the audience?
Can I mention one thing on that topic? I just wanna mention, if there's room in the budget, we're exploring putting actuated beacons on the both legs of Crawford. It's just, uh, depends if the money's available.
Yeah. I think that's what, when we passed the first Crawford one, I think that was a question I asked, could we retrofit those things and you said we could, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I think that's a great idea. Um, I think, uh, it'll help with the pedestrian safety.
Way, way too many children in that area between school and the park and everything else.
The technology's come a long way too. I mean, I think two great things about those for children. One, they inherently understand how to push the button. You know, it's very similar to a crosswalk and a signal that, the pu- push button looks the same. So they inherently u- understand how to use it. Yeah, I had another one and it slipped my mind off. I'm sure I'll remember it in a minute.
I, I'll have a question.
Oh, sorry.
Speed limits.
I remember.
And I, and I understand that every, every, depending on the size of the, of the roundabout, it's, it's a speed. But here in Wenatchee, I've, I've been noticing that the, when you approach, we have the yellow sign, which means cautious, right? Drive at fifteen, twenty.
Yeah.
But as, as you proceed and you slow and you look, those vehicles are going fast and that's the danger zone that I noticed. And that's what everybody should be focused in because kinda like what, uh, Councilmember Keith said, whatever, whatever there's passengers. You know, I worry about the speed. Is there a way we can put a speed limit? And with the police to, to enforce it. Put it right there when you're, when you're making that turn because as soon as you proceed, everybody's speeding. And they're not, they're not being, they're not, I, I notice that they're not looking both ways. So I mean, that's what I wanna enforce more about the speeding thing.
Yeah, enforcement definitely is a component of keeping speeds down. Um, but there are treatments that can be used that have proven pretty effective. Um, I don't know if you have any in the city here. Uh, a lot of people that, sometimes you hear, especially from the public, they suggest like, can we put speed humps in here? Like, people don't like that, they're very abrupt. They do slow people down, you know, but, uh, they're very abrupt. But there, there's newer treatments, uh, something called mumble strips that are very thin strips that go across the road. And they just, it's like, um, on the highway when you s- when you kinda run off the road a little bit and you just hear that brief shudder. Um, these are just thin thermoplastic strips that go across the road in advance of, you can use them at roundabouts, but anywhere you really wanna control speeds. So really effective at giving a tactile feedback, um, to people that helps moderate speeds. So speed tables at the crosswalks also help if people know they're gonna hit a speed table there. Generally, you know, once drivers are acclimated to that, uh, they'll slow down in advance of it. So could people wanna fly off these things, slam their car, you know? So there, there's, there are some treatments that you can use that have proven to be effective, but, um, enforcement definitely is a, a component of controlling, uh, corridor speeds sometimes.
Thank you.
So Councilmember Cueros, with enforcement in areas like this, when we build these traffic calming, primarily for traffic calming and law, what we've done and for the pedestrian safety, we eliminate the really a good ability to work those areas for enforcement. We delete street parking, we delete the things where we have line of sight and can also be a little bit less visible. The other challenge is enforcing the speed in that very short little box. It's a speed measuring device only. I think if we look at the three E's of traffic safety, engineering is definitely our best friend with these, with these mini roundabouts and ensuring that the chicane upon entry and that deflection angle is high enough that it forces people to slow down. But the speed tables, mumble strips, all of these things also work better for us as well and we just have to be sure they're compliant with our plows so we can actually remove snow and ice from the things.
Chief, um, so you know, like, uh, school zones?
Yes, sir.
Uh, and during school times, you get the flashing light, tells you don't go over twenty miles per hour. But then you also have some of them, you have the, the speed, uh, tells you how fast. I think that's a great shaming tool for, for people because it goes from.
Especially the ones that say slow down and they're flashing, you know?
Yeah, or something like, uh, if you're going on, uh, Western, going past Newberry and all of a sudden, if you're over that twenty, it's a different color. It's like, you know, you're not go- um, maybe that could be some kinda tool used, um, cause so that the officers can control school zones, but like for roundabouts, maybe you could have this kinda visual shaming tool for pe- people to slow down. I don't know what.
We definitely have to use, yeah, feedback speed signs, uh, on approaches where speeds are a concern. The, the other thing I was gonna say about the RFBs is that the technology has come so far that they're really easy to put up and they're a nice package because they're almost, you can get them solar powered now so you don't have to worry about separate power service, hardwiring. Um, they all come as kind of a turnkey package that can be put up very quickly. Um, so, and the, the speed feedback signs come the same way now.
Let's do it.
Thanks for being patient. Let's, we'll ask the audience for a couple of questions. You can a- ask Sean and then he can repeat it or whatever's easiest for you or you can come up, whatever you decide.
I just wanted to make a remark, uh, regarding the Springwater Western intersection there.
Excuse me, Mayor, if you don't mind, can you use a microphone in case people are listening?
Well, Sean can repeat it if you don't mind your comment, either way.
Um, there is a way.
The microphone.
Oh, yeah.
Turn it on, use this.
Thank you. Uh, I live near the Springwater Western one and I've lived there since before they put it in. And when it first came in, I was really put off. I, I drive through there and I walk through there a lot. I was really put off by the walking through because it was scary, you know? But then eventually I got my own education going and I recognized that splitter thing. Yeah, uh, it does take some patience. You gotta wait for the people on this side, say I'm on this side of it, uh, to see you so you know they're gonna slow down. But once you get to that other island, you're safe till that one sees you too. So I like those, but, and when I first ran into them, I thought, why do they put them way down the block? I gotta walk further, you know? But now I'm glad because I know about them. But also with driving, what I have noticed is that people coming down Western say they're going north and people are trying to get on at Springwater. Uh, these people, it's almost like they feel like they, they gotta keep that speed up so nobody else come in, you know? So these people are waiting and waiting and waiting. And maybe having some rubble strips just to remind them to slow down because they're coming fast into it. Then of course they put on their brake, but by that time, they think they're too fast to come out. And so there is that. And one last thing is I have noticed, uh, I back up to Poplar, my home, and I've noticed that the delivery trucks for neighborhood deliveries to the markets and from one market to another avoid that roundabout and come down the street behind me where they never used to before. And I can't see where they'd have, you know, like a Cisco, they're pretty long. I can't see where it could get around that one.
Yeah.
And they can't cut across because of those little things in the middle.
Yeah, it, no, we appreciate your comment. Uh, is there any other questions? And then, and, and I'm gonna have your team, w- if you're here for that, to ask a few questions outside because we got one more thing to go, but.
Sure.
I'm sorry if I was too long.
No, I want you to, anybody else wanna talk to the council right now? Come on, get, yeah.
I have a question.
Sure.
About, it's the Springwater Western intersection and what she was commenting on, the cars that.
Hold on a second. Thank you.
The cars that come down Western do snug up to each other. So I'm sitting on Springwater. Am I supposed to wait for, I mean, I have to wait for the intersection to clear, but I can wait ten, fifteen cars and it's really annoying. I thought that, you know, you were supposed to kinda take turns. Is that not true? Are you supposed to let that Springwater traffic just continue to go?
You are.
Okay.
Yeah, you, if, if, uh, if you're waiting and cars are coming from your left, you know, you do have to wait for the roundabout to, to clear before you enter traffic. But really thi- this would not be different than, uh, the stock condition that was there previously where, uh, their Western was unimpeded at that point with no control. So you would still have a line of fifteen cars that you would need to wait for to clear until you did enter traffic.
Okay.
Really not that different. But yes, you're not supposed to, uh, zipper or something in a roundabout. You do need to wait, um, for the right of way.
Does anyone else have questions?
Yeah, we'll, we'll post, uh, the videos on, um, our social media, uh, and try to push those out a little bit. And then if, if you're only here for the roundabouts, the staff will meet you in the hall and ask a few more questions. So thank you and we'll take just a couple minute, five minute break.
Thank you.
Thank you.